I'd like to call the order, the City of Cleveland Planning Commission regular meeting for October 21st at 6:30 P. M. First, we have roll call.
Commissioner Cozer.
Mills here.
Commissioner Moreno, here. Commissioner Rouse is absent. Vice Chair Sullivan is absent. Chair Cladbrock.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I'm gonna read our coronavirus COVID-19 advisory pursuant to Assembly Bill AB 361. This meeting will be held in person and electronically. In-person participation by the public is permitted and remote electronic public participation is also available in the following ways. You can join the Zoom meeting, there's a link provided, and you can dial in by, or you can dial in by phone at 1-669-900-9128. The meeting ID is 816-609-79009 with a passcode of 185324. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by raise, by using their raise the hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing in by phone, use star nine to raise and lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute your phone. Thank you. Written comment cards can be given to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Comments can also be submitted via email at d@cityofcleveland.org before 5:00 P. M. on the day of the meeting. All comments will be distributed to the Planning Commission and made part of the official minutes. First, we're going to ask for approval of our Planning Commission regular meeting agenda for today, October 21st, 2021.
Mr. Chair, I actually had a question about the agenda.
Yes, go right ahead.
Sorry, I didn't bring that up.
Yes.
It says that the recommendation, and I don't know if this matters, but it says that the recommendation is to review and discuss the draft ordinance with the matrix, but there is no draft ordinance or matrix in the agenda, I mean, in the packet. There's a list of regulations, but not an actual ordinance, so I don't know if we need to change that to correct that, or if it matters.
Yeah, I think the, we could change possibly the wording from ordinance to draft.
Regulations.
Regulations, yeah, yeah, until we get the ordinance, that's fine. Does that work, Dana? Alright, thank you.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the change of the word ordinance to regulations in the recommendation for 7.1.
Have a second.
I'll say it back.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Alright, Commissioner Cozer.
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno, yes. Commissioner Rouse is absent. Vice Chair Sullivan is absent. Chair Cladbrock.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment in accordance with California Government Code Section 54954.3. The public may address the Planning Commission on any item concerning subject matter that is within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. However, no action may be taken on items not posted on the agenda other than briefly to respond, refer to staff, or direct them to be placed on a future agenda. Do we have any public comment?
Stephen Oveig, Cleveland, California.
Hi, Steve.
I have a question on well, anyway, I can't find it right now. It says if you have more than one unit on one parcel, you have to occupy.
Okay, yeah, feel free to come on back up and we'll get to that section. Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Oh, well, I I do have another question.
Alright, yeah.
Years ago, when, whenever they did a general plan or changed the zoning, we had okay, we had a mixed-use zoning and they changed to residential, and I just wondered what the process would be to get it changed back to what we had before or commercial.
Can I have staff answer?
We, we weren't notified when they made the change, so and Pete Garbaldi has, he could make her, and he has the same question.
Okay, so just to clarify, you're looking for zoning was changed from residential to mixed-use, and what would be the process to go back potentially changing it to another zoning?
Well, put it back to where it was, is what I'm asking. And we weren't notified they were gonna change it, and they changed it. We weren't aware of it till just recently. So we just wondered if there is a process to change it back to what we had before or change it back to commercial? Because we're in a commercial area over on Pacific Street. Industrial is next to us, commercial is right around the corner. And so we just, that's all I have a question for.
Aaron, could you help?
Yeah, so when anyone in the city wants to apply for a change of zone, they would need to submit application for a rezone. The city would review the code and our general plan to see if changing the zone is consistent with those, those documents that we have. And then we bring it to the Planning Commission and the city council as the final say on that. So there's an application, application fee, environmental review is involved. I can't speak to what happened in 2013, 14. That is when I think our most recent comprehensive general zoning ordinance update was. And I know that that section of town is very mixed-use. There is residential, you know, some of the uses that aren't really compatible next to each other there, and they just put a residential zoning district over them all. And then others then, you know, some of the commercial and industrial uses over there have come to me asking, why would I change my business? What do I do? Well, you're a non-performing city, you need to change zones, so it's an application process that you can go through.
Okay.
But there is another option now. And that is if, when they do the zoning, so they have to do a general plan update. When they do the general plan update, then they have to do the zoning update. And you can come in as a group if the whole area feels that they've been disowned and make comments about what they have proposed in there, and the city council can take action on their own without you having to make an application.
And when do they do the?
That, that's the big question. It's, it should have been done, but it hasn't been done yet. So, and, and quite honestly, I, I believe that this this traffic study had to do with changing the zoning out in that area, didn't it? The one that Carol Henderson's been asking about. It had to do with changing the, the zoning over in the Chickaplot area.
So I think we're getting off topic from what the public comment is right now.
We're allowed to answer questions if we're not.
Yeah, I think, I think generally speaking, it sounds like there's, there's going to be another general plan review that has, there hasn't been a date setter to determine when that would be. The other approach would be what Aaron went through, which is applying for a zoning change.
Alright, thank you.
Yep. Alright, there are no presentations. Let's go to consent calendar items, which is the approval of the Plan Commission regular meeting agenda minutes of September 2nd, 2021. And I do have one comment on the, the meeting minutes. Jason Rouse, the commissioner who is not here this evening, did indicate that during the voting process, he wished to abstain versus vote yes or no on the item that was voted on. So he would like it reflected in the meeting minutes that during that, the vote that was called, that he would be marked as abstaining from voting versus voting or yes or no.
Was that the, the short-term rental one? Do you know? Short-term, yes.
Yes, exactly. Yes, it was. Yep. I wanted to make sure.
Alright, I don't have any problems with that question when we make the motion. I had questions because I thought there were more public speakers on the short-term rental, Dana. I thought it could be mixed up, maybe. We've only talked about this at one meeting though, right?
Two. Two.
Oh, so maybe it was the first meeting?
Oh, so maybe it was the first meeting?
So when there were the three things at the first meeting and then specifically this one at the next meeting.
Okay, so when Jamie Lovango talked, that was at the previous meeting? Okay.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Good, good. They all, they kind of flowed together.
I know.
Erin and Stephanie, can you use your mics too, especially if you're making a correction in case she doesn't hear you while we're doing birthday?
Okay, sorry, sorry enough, yeah. It's so loud up here that it feels like I don't need your mic, but so I'm not thinking of it. I'm not.
It's just, it's just for the recording.
I'll give a motion to approve the minutes.
One more.
One more, Kevin.
Alright, just, I saw Jason's face pop up on Zoom. I don't know if he is here. He left. Okay, I was gonna say he joined, but I just wanted to make sure that's reflected in the minutes, but he joined, but he's not, so.
Alright.
I guess we need public comment on the consent agenda though, right? See if there's any public comments on the consent agenda before I make a motion. Are we on the consent agenda?
No.
Other minutes?
I don't think so.
Right, number five, the consent calendar, which is just the one item.
It's just comments from the Commission.
We, no, no, public has a right to comment.
Okay. Are there any comments on the previous Planning Commission minutes? Alright.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended to reflect that Jason had abstained on the short-term rental and if you could reflect that change in the minutes as well, Dana, so that we can see it. That's my motion.
Alright, thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll say it then.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Cozer?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner Rouse is absent. Vice Chair Sullivan is absent. Chair Cladbro.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. Three, four, and two absent.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings. We'll move to item 7.1. Continued discussion around the draft ordinance regarding the regulation on short-term vacation rentals. And so first on that item, we'll ask for a public comment. Oh, yes, go ahead first and just give an overview. And then one, Steve, once she's done, then go ahead and come on up, yeah.
Commissioner Rouse has joined the meeting, so.
Oh, great.
Commissioner Rouse, I mean, I request you to unmute, I believe, but you don't have to, but if anytime you wish to speak, you can unmute yourself because you are a commissioner.
Go ahead, Erin.
Okay. Thank you. So just quickly, background, both in August and September, we brought this to the Planning Commission. The first was kind of a discussion of some of the big ordinance updates we're going to be working on this year as a planning commission. And then last meeting, we, I brought it to the commission with a draft of regulations, a matrix comparing how other cities short-term vacation rentals. At that meeting, we had a discussion and we took comments. So I took that information provided or collected at that meeting from both Commissioner comments and public comments. And as you notice, it's not in ordinance form. I felt it had a little bit more work to do before we brought it back into full ordinance form. And so that's why, again, it's just in a staff report form versus ordinance. The next time, hopefully, we'll be ready for a codified or document that can then be.
Well, it's not coming back to us, right? It's coming, we're making our recommendation tonight opposed to the City Council. That was my understanding. We don't actually have to see the ordinance. We can just recommend the regulations and then I I think we do have to bring it back because it needs to be a public hearing and as an ordinance. But we're not, that's what I'm saying, if we don't adopt an ordinance, then we don't have to do the public hearing that occurred at the City Council.
Oh, so if it was drafted as an ordinance and brought to the City Council, they would, that would be the public hearing.
Right, it would be at the City Council because we're just making recommendations on regulations. We don't have an ordinance in the packet. So I thought we were just going to make a motion to approve, you know, as presented or amended. And then the City Council would take it up next. You prepare the ordinance for them.
And that is, I think, would be the easiest way to do it. It saves time. But what our code says is the zoning amendment, which is a zoning amendment because we're adding something to our zoning code, may be initiated by the Planning Commission or the City Council by an applicant or property owners of parcels by the effect to be affected by the zoning amendment or by the recommendation of the Planning Director. The designated approving authority for a zoning amendment is the City Council, which shall hold a public hearing on the Planning Commission recommendation prior to taking action. The Planning Commission shall hold a public hearing and then shall provide recommendations which shall include the reasons for the recommendation and the relationship for the proposal of the general plan. The City Council approves by ordinance or designs the zoning amendment in accordance with the requirements and so on and so. So we need to bring it back here for, to hold as a public hearing and based on our public hearings need to be noticed in the newspaper. Okay, so I'm confused. Why didn't we just have a public hearing in the first place before we developed the regulations? So that we have those public, I mean, it seems like we're really stretching this out. And I'm all for transparency, but it seems like we should have a public hearing. We're required to have a public hearing. We should have had it in the beginning before we started developing all the regulations. So we're developing with full public hearing comment rather than just doing our own thing based on whoever reads the agenda and shows that.
Yeah, I think, well, we're here, where we're where we're at. I think it's a good comment. I think in the future, maybe we make it a more formal draft and then have a public hearing sooner. That's a good idea.
Well, you take the public hearing to take comments before you even draft anything, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess it probably is a technicality because we didn't call it a public hearing, but we took public comments, so, yeah.
Public comments that call me in.
Yeah, it's good to know. Good suggestion to do and if maybe on the next topic.
Well, that means that it's a month away before we can have a public hearing. And then the City Council has to notice another public hearing for the City Council, so it's putting it off till next year almost to get it done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, but the city has many things that they're working on. Our planning department is very, very busy at this point. And there are things that unfortunately take priority over certain things, other things. I take direction from the city manager where they need me to spend my time and efforts. I take my direction from the city manager.
Okay, but the City Council can give direction to the city manager to do something in the planning department, right?
I take my direction from the city manager.
Yep.
So that's who gives me direction.
Yeah, I think on this one, I think that's a good suggestion. And I know we have another topic in the future. Maybe we could kind of change that approach.
Is this time do us from City Council? Is the City Council asked us to do these things? Yes.
So in in light of where we're at today, I think we do have to formalize our ordinance further and then bring it back as the dra, as the draft ordinance in the future. Next meeting, if we if we can, and it sounds like we have to notice that as a public.
That's what I thought. We would organize what we've got as this is the way we would think it should be presented have a discussion on that and have it sent over to the council, have them review it, add their comments to it, then have the public hearing.
So we'll be seeing you guys a lot.
Yeah, and it may be at a point where you're you're feel good where we're at. And if you read the notes and you know where you've you've provided some really valuable insight input, you may be fine with it as well. So so totally up to you. Yeah, thank you for coming.
Their discussion to the Planning Commission, that open hearing, they had their say. No, that's a beginning step, but it's not the final one. We wrapped everything up and now it's going to go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So Erin, any other comments before we open it up for public comment on the?
It's the desire of the commission for me to go through these changes and some of the other comments that I have received between when this was published and tonight. I can do that. It sounds, I'm not sure what you guys.
Yeah, let's do that. And then we'll take public comment, then we'll discuss potential changes.
What other comments have you received? There's nothing in the packet. Or other, I'm sorry, other other things going through this in discussion with staff?
Okay, but not other public comments.
Yeah, okay. In discussion with other people. No written public comments for this.
That would be great. Thank you.
So the the permit fee of a flat 195 versus how we typically do administrative use permits, which is a deposit plus a cost recovery. So that proposing that that covers three hours of staff time. And that is is actually less than what we would charge a developer at three hours of staff time. That rate is much higher build out when a developer comes in. So again, we're trying to kind of pass these savings on to our local, our local property owners. Oh, and then a renewal with every three years versus one year. I did have it brought up. Is that going to cause issues then? Are we going to not notice TOT hasn't been collected every three years? You know, that if that's the checkpoint of these applications. And so should it be moved back to one year? That was something that was brought to brought up to me in conversation with someone. Also, the permit cap, I realize we use the number 450, which includes Zimpandale Ridge and the parts of the parts of Zimpandale Ridge that have been developed. And I know that Zimpandale Ridge Homer Association does not allow for this. So that makes that number, that 5% of the 22 units is not accurate of the number of houses that could actually do this because Zimpandale Ridge is not allowed. And then thinking about the growth of the city and the continuation of the houses being built as in the no ridge, the potential for other developments and HOAs. How are we going to adjust that number or that percentage? If we use, you know, if the if the total number of units in the city gets up to 1,000, but 500 of those units are in HOAs that don't allow short-term vacation rentals per their regulations, do we exclude those from the calculation? Do we include them? And then does it saturate the rest of the city with the short-term vacation rentals because it's not spread out of the whole entire city?
So Erin, are we gonna, are we gonna do your whole report and then we'll respond to your questions?
Well, then we'll take public comment.
Take, have it then respond. Okay, all at once.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
I think the other things were kind of the same. The next one is the maximum maximum occupancy, which we spent some time, a lot of time discussing at the last meeting, and so I just made a chart in there to make it more clear. So I know it was, it was getting a little confusing. And so this was, something like this would be included in any informational handout that we curated for the application process. The number of parking spaces and where those cars can and can't park, again, was updated from last time. Also, I think it's important to probably add, and I, and we have in that additional regulations and what the application should be including, including. I have, it just says off-street parking, but I think we should to make sure that parking is in the appropriate places and not going to have impacts on neighbors, that they need to provide a both on and off-street parking plan of where they can and can't park so that we know that they are in the legal street parking adjacent to the site. We changed the emergency contact from 30 to 20 minutes. The information on for guests is is the same. And the additional regulations are pretty much the same as what we discussed last time, including the making sure that this information is all available to the renters plus some additional visitors information. And so everyone is aware of what what the expectations are on the on the renters and on the owners. The other things that are new from last meeting or what was enforcement. And so based on our municipal code, we have a code enforcement section and that would be able, we'd be able to use that to enforce any any issues that would arise from this ordinance when it becomes an ordinance. And then the other thing that was discussed was the amnesty, because since we do have some units in the city that are currently operating, is that we would allow people, units that are operating that are in good standing, which have a business license and have been paying their TOT, would have a 90-day amnesty grace period to get their permit application submitted. Those that are not in good standing would have to cease with their rentals and and once they have their application in and approved, then they can resume. And I know because the way in ordinance works and there's first and second readings and then it takes 30 days to go into effect, people will have additional time. So when it goes to the City Council, it will go on a first reading and then the next, and then it will go a second meeting, reading at a meeting and then it takes 30 days. So so you're two, two months prior to that start date, people will have a pretty fair warning of what would be required for a permit. And so hopefully they could, anyone who is not in good standing right now could get themselves there and ready to apply and ready to go as soon as the ordinance went into effect and there wouldn't be much issue, so. Yeah, I think that's kind of covered what changes we've made from last meeting to this meeting and some of the other comments that I have received over the last week or so.
Alright, first we'll take public comment. Steve?
Stephen, you live in California. I have a couple of different questions. The first one would be the code enforcement officer, is this the same person that's keeping the dog from barking and making people clean up their yards and not have junk cars in their yard? Is this the same person? Or is there a new magic one coming out here?
It's the same person, but we're, I was confused why that was in the packet because we're not discussing enforcement provisions. We're only discussing the regulations.
Okay.
If the other city, I mean, the enforcement provisions weren't posted on the agenda. And that should be the City Council that decides how they want to enforce it.
Well, and the only thing I'm thinking is 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 the code enforcement officer driving out on a Friday night and saying, oh, we have seven people and there's only three bedrooms. I'm going to write you out or whatever. I don't think it's going to happen, but anyway, second question was what the city defines as a parcel. We have a unique piece of property in Chicken Flat that has two houses on it, was two parcels, two water meters, two sewer bupts. But the tax man is billing this as one parcel. So what are you billing or what are you defining as a parcel as far as we would have to live in one of the units if we had two parcel, two houses on one parcel?
It doesn't matter how many acres it is. If you have two legal parcels there, you're governed by the parcels. The tax bill, they they put it together for convenience. It doesn't establish two different. I mean, one parcel. And if the city were to say that you would, then you can go get a certificate of compliance from the county that recognizes the separate parcels. It makes them give you two tax numbers and.
Yeah, perfect. We have two water bills, so we're good.
Alright. Any additional comment? Thanks, Steve. Let's, any additional comment on? Oh, go ahead. Yes, we have additional comments here. And just a reminder, if you have additional comments, you can do star nine to raise your hand on the Zoom meeting. Go ahead.
Elizabeth Pennelli. Erin mentioned that the $65 is every three years and that would be, I have a concern with that in that that is a long time to to not notice someone if they're in arrears, if there's a clerical error, if there's a misunderstanding. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's it's an issue that that the even the owner is, you know, it's helpful for the owner to to get noticed. I don't, I don't think that it's a bad idea to do a review every year. I don't think that $65 a year is egregious. I I would like, if you have to do a business license every year and that every year, but it is my, I guess my first question is that permit taking the place of a business license?
Yeah.
So it would be the permit is one, the one-time 195. And then the $65 is proposed every three years and then like $50 every year for this license.
This was discussed by the council or the commission last time. That they didn't, they didn't want to do every year because people make investments and they don't want to have that every year trying.
trying to re-justify their business.
But there could be.
The T O T is totally separate, Elizabeth. If the, what we discussed is if they're not paying their T O T, then they're in violation of their um use permit and they can be enforced on for that reason. You don't have to wait till the end of the three years if somebody's operating outside of the use permit.
I guess I just misunderstood it.
No, I.
Yeah, I think that was my understanding as well, yeah. Is that, is that how we're interpreting this as a planning?
Yes, I think. What I was saying also in my report and kind of, I mean, Elizabeth echoed it, though. It, if we're auditing these every three years as staff, there is a chance that if they have fallen out of compliance in that three years, I go back and say, well, eighteen months ago, you stopped paying your T O T and now they're eighteen months, but if we're checking every twelve months, there's less. Maybe would be missed.
The T O T should be a regular, Michael, don't you guys check out T O Ts on a quarterly basis?
Uh, no, not for some of these, and so.
But for regular hotels.
For regular, for regular hotels, yes.
So why would these be different? Why would you just not be checking the T O Ts if they have a use permit, checking to make sure they're putting their money in?
Uh, because partly we don't have the ordinance like this in place, essentially.
No, I meant when it is in place.
So when it is in place, we would, we just, we haven't been currently.
Right.
Uh, if we've got people, if we've got people with that um. And we've sent the requirements, then it it would be relatively simple for the finance department to check quarterly or yearly. Um, it's. It it would probably be easiest if something to that effect was included.
I I assume it would be that they have to maintain their T O T.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we would include the frequency of collection of tax in the ordinance, but it should be a city.
The the frequency of collection, no, because that's already set by the staff ordinances, which is the quarterly, it's governed by the city.
Yeah.
Item. So you could, you could do something like a yearly audit.
You could just say they have to stay, they have to maintain in good standing with their T O T with the city in order to make.
Yeah, I think that should be assumed, though, like uh, part of the, they've, you've applied, say, person's applied. They've submitted the application, they're agreeing to the ord- the ordinance as written and accepted, which includes paying T O T.
Right.
It's up to the city's process to determine how they. Inspect and collect that T O T.
Right, it doesn't have to wait until the use permits.
Yeah, exactly, so the three-year renewal of sixty-five dollars doesn't mean we're going to wait three years, to my understanding. I, if I was, well, you know, we're not running the city as a, as a city manager, but I would think you would want, you would want to review those much more than even annually, just because it's a, it's income.
I have one more question.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's even possible with the city of our size. Um, I know that um it would be really, really. Easy for us and easier for the city if it's possible. But I know that Airbnb and VRBO both have a system where a city can apply and they, we don't ever see the money. We take the twelve percent and it's paid directly to the city. Um, I know that my cousin has Airbnbs in certain places and and the city just gets the money. And I know that a lot of people are going paperless and wireless and, or not wireless, but paperless and and automatic payment. We just got it in our water bill that we can just set it up and not have to 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 worry about it. Is that something that the city could look into? I mean, I know that, I don't know how much time it would take, but I know that that my cousin has Airbnbs in other places and they just. The twelve percent is on there and and at one point I was under the impression, because Airbnb told us that they were going to do that with the city of Plymouth. And I have the name of a person if anybody cares. I mean, that person might might do Airbnb anymore. But if if that could happen, that would be so much easier for the city and for us, because you guys would just get the money.
Yeah, I I totally agree with that. I I think it's separate from the ordinance, because that's more of a collection process.
Well, it, so, so I think, Bill, is that the city would have to mandate that the Airbnb, I mean, that the. The um, short-term rentals subscribe to a platform. And I don't know if they're going to want to do that, because you can do it privately and not go through Airbnb. Uh, if you make people go through the platforms that cost.
Right, who knows what the future platforms are, it's a great idea.
Great idea.
Like, I would think.
Yeah.
It's probably a good idea for the city maybe to go through Airbnb and and VRBO, the two primary providers right now.
Right.
Um, it for that service, but again, that's, I think that's probably outside of the ordinance, but it's probably a good suggestion for the city.
I think it's a great suggestion.
Staff.
All right, uh, so Stephanie's exactly right, but you have some unfortunate news for you guys. And so I'm glad I was here. So uh, you're right, I, I know people do that, Airbnb does that elsewhere. The general way uh that it's done in most jurisdictions would be you're required by ordinance that anyone uses one of those websites. The websites are required to report directly. Much larger cities have done that, it's great. Airbnb has a contact person for that. Permit is small, so we actually did reach out to Airbnb specifically and we asked about that. Because we said, we know we've got some Airbnbs, could we get this set up? Uh, because there's been almost an issue of T O T compliance necessarily, there's some people who just don't know. And it would be so easy if Airbnb could tell people, hey, it's going to be, we're going to take ten percent, it goes to the city, all done, done for them. Uh, apparently Airbnb either is not doing any more of those by city request or certain cities, they're pulling out of those cities if they request it.
Oh.
So and if you think about it for Airbnb, if they have to make a report, so I mean, say whatever number of Airbnbs we're limited to. I mean, we use that term generically, but um if it's only ten, it may not be worth it to Airbnb to deal with it.
Yeah, thank you, I I do, again, I I do think it's something outside the ordinance more in the collection process. Um, and if if they wanted to support that would be.
Just some information on that.
Yep.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Yeah, any other comments? And any, any comments on Zoom, you would press star nine to raise your hand if there's any attendees that would like to speak. We'll just give them a moment.
Isn't that just for the phone, star nine?
So raise your hand during the Zoom meeting to.
If you're, if you're on just a phone call.
If you're at a phone call, but if you're, can you be on Zoom on online?
Yeah, that's, yeah, you're monitored, so you're monitored Zoom and somebody could actually raise their hand as a feature.
Chat with the iPhone.
Yeah, so they, if, well, so for instance, the one person on appears to be Jason, looks like it's not from his phone.
Okay.
So if he's got it on the computer in the background.
Okay, so the star nine is only for the phone, okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's a reminder, that's the one that a lot of people have missed.
Yeah.
And I mean, we do not want to leave somebody out.
Absolutely, I just.
All right, so we'll just go around the room one more time, anybody from the audience, anybody on Zoom? Or anybody on the phone can press star nine. To raise their hand to speak. All right, we'll go ahead and move on, thank you for public comment, appreciate your participation again as always. And let's go ahead and open up for commissioners' comments.
Want me to go first?
Mel, or Mel?
I had a comments in regards to. Yeah, in the ordinance here. She laid out quite a bit of the problems on the last, on how it's going to be organized. Administrative fees and so on and so forth. I would like to see. Because she references in here a lot of the. Problems that may be offensive. And. In the. Twelve, twelve, ten. Item six, seven, and eight. There's a period of time the action goes in. Per section twenty dash oh eight dash oh four oh. She does that on six, seven, and eight. I think when they're getting the paperwork. Those items should be supplemental to the agreement so that they got them right there with them and because they won't have access to the ordinances to be able to know. Some of the ramifications.
And so just to confirm, Mel, is what you're saying is like as the, as somebody applies, that we would copy and give them the municipal code for how it's enforced?
That's correct.
Is that something you think Erin would be feasible?
Yeah, we can include something like that in the information in the application package.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Because it helps the two-way street get to the same point.
All right, any other comments, Mel?
I think that takes care of what I saw in the quick review of everything on it here. You've discussed it pretty well and. My feeling was on this thing is we'll have our chance to review.
Turn your microphone off, Mel.
We'll have, I'm sorry. We'll have our input into it by what we're doing tonight, reviewing things, getting public comment. Turn it over to, this is what we've got, city council, you do the same thing. Then when we'll get together and review everything, then it can be implemented.
Yep, all right, thank you, Mel, appreciate the comment, Stephanie.
Yes, thank you. Um, so first of all, Erin, um, I I appreciate that you, when you leave here with our comments that you want to put the regulations together and that you're getting additional comments from your supervisor or whoever's providing comments, but it's confusing for me, um, and I'm sure it's confusing for the public when the the product that comes back doesn't match what we asked for. And um, but those comments are valid, so I I think it'd be easier if you came back with what we asked for and then had a separate section that said staff wants to make these additional recommendations for your consideration. Because this isn't what we asked for in some cases. And it's just confusing to me because there's no chain showing what's gone on in between the last meeting and this meeting. So if if you could do that, I appreciate, I don't know how the other council members feel, but I just feel that it would be clearer for us that.
Could, what, what I, my understanding, I think was what was presented, what we decided last time? Was there, was something changed that we didn't talk about?
Yeah, I think that there's some in here.
I don't, I don't.
Well, for example, the non, the non-transferable administrative, I mean, I don't see anything talking about them not being non-transferable in the last meeting. I think that's added. And that's a big deal, because if somebody sells their um, their short-term rental, you're actually given the permit to somebody. That person's buying it with the understanding that it's going to be a short-term rental, they're getting more value for it and and. I mean, and maybe the commission.
Potentially.
From my, from my notes, I have non-transferable as what was added from last meeting, so I don't remember discussing it.
I know we discussed the type of administrative use permit and I couldn't tell if it was transferable or non-transferable. I would think it's up to the. If if there's a sale, it's up to the new owner, what the, because a lot of people, me and the occupier residents, have no intention.
But they may not want to, but what if they do, they shouldn't have to come back and use the.
I think they should, just so they know the, whoever the, their owner is, should know the regulation that they're following. Yeah.
But but they'll get a permit, just like when you, you know, buy a business.
Like everybody else, yeah.
I mean, pardon me if I'm wrong, but if the, if Hopeville Market has a use permit and they sell, do they have, does the new owner have to get a new use permit in order to maintain the precious store or does the use permit go with the property?
They, that, in that case, use permit goes with the property. I think the non-transferable from um how other cities were doing it, that was what my research showed. All other cities that we looked at were non-transferable, yeah. Um, and so I, so I'm opposed to that, because I. So it sounds like one commissioner is opposed to it, that this is something, yeah.
Yeah, I I actually have a problem with the transfer, I mean. I honestly, I do think that a, a new property owner should. Be fully aware of what they're, what they're getting, right? And that may mean, I don't know if it's some sort of notice, but they're not the ones who receive the enforcement mechanisms, right?
Right.
Like, so do they know what the, the regulation is without, yeah? Uh, could we take a comment from the public? She. I know we have some good, go ahead. You have good history here, so.
So if, so we're being treated like a business, like other businesses, and I understand that. Um, so if Rest sold and or the forty-niner sold. Are their use permits transferable? Are we, are we in a different category, are we considered a business? Um, are all the other, one question at a time, are all the other businesses in this, within the city of Plymouth and under the jurisdiction um, subject to a non-transferable or transferable use permit? How are, how is this different?
That's a good, I think that's where Stephanie was going, so.
If there are, if it is, if it is willy-nilly, if you have this kind of business and it's not transferable, but if you, but we are technically brick-and-mortar businesses in the city of Plymouth, so are we treated the same as other brick-and-mortar businesses?
That's fair. Um, so in general, it sounds like a, uh, there's a transferable permit. If a business is transferred ownership. And we can certainly amend it um to be a transferable administrative use permit, is that something that? Um, you think would be okay?
And I'm, I'm not saying one is better than the other, I'm just, my question was, are there any other businesses who are subject to non-transferable business permits that have a structure in the city?
I would think that there, that could be a condition of a use permit.
But she's asking if it is a condition.
You know, and I haven't reviewed every single use permit in the city, so I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
But it could be a condition of a use permit.
Could it also, but so when we apply for a use permit, can we apply for either one? I mean, we're not selling, that's not, I'm just thinking future-wise.
It would have to be consistent um in the code that, so right now, the administrative use permits, I believe, are trans, I don't see anything in the code that says they're not transferable, so she's suggesting that it be, unless I missed it and I could have. She's suggesting that it be a condition on a use permit for short-term rentals. I'm thinking that that's not very business-friendly. Um, somebody comes in, gets a permit, they want to sell the business, it's a legitimate use permit, the, the new people are going to be subject to all the same terms. Um, I think they should be allowed to take over that business and then renew it when that term is up, so. Thank you, that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, is, so is um. If we amended to say transferable administrative use permit. Would that? Is there a code that that would apply to?
I mean, that would just go into the ordinance for our short-term vacation rental, that it goes with the property and not the owner.
Okay.
And I, I'm not sure, Michael, if this is even a question you can answer for the commission in the, in the public, but are short-term vacation rentals considered businesses under our code, like a brick-and-mortar business?
Yeah, I guess that was my question, it wasn't.
Okay, so there's something I can, I think I might be better left to the city attorney. Um, I may be able to help with this, I can tell you why most places do it this way. It's because, and and partly it has to do with the zoning, it's essentially as a non-performing use. So it is kind of what Erin talked about, it's important to have a, a new owner come in that they do have to review all the rules, regulations, and sign off on that. So I mean, I guess if you know people in other jurisdictions, I guess it's not transferable. Um, additionally, actually, city uh licenses, like the business licenses, uh, those are. There's actually a Title V, so municipal code five dot oh two dot oh nine oh, transfer license. First thing it says, no license issued pursuant to this chapter shall be transferred, except under the following conditions. And the main thing is, is if the purchaser has to come back in and say, I want to do this business. So if you're taking over like a license or realize that's not the same thing. By having them, having them come in and at least recognize it. You talked about not wanting to stop it, you could have, you could have it and say the license will be held open, it's not going to get issued, somebody else give them a period of time that contact from the city or or something like that, but. It, it becomes especially enforcement, which it's not. Necessarily in it, but I would say, for instance, they, they can prove they have sold, but they can't prove. You know, um, how far they rented it with what we're tracking renting, that's a lot of information, but. I I think non-transferable is, it's like I said, what most people do, there's generally precedent for it. But I think if anything, like what we do with business licenses, is make it easy to transfer if, as a, but.
I'm getting the impression that city staff doesn't want to have short-term rentals in the city of Plymouth. I I mean, you're, you're making it so difficult for people to get.
Why is that, I'm sorry.
I mean, I, I think it's, they're, they're talking about enforcement for everything rather than talking about making a permit process that's going to be easy for people to follow and contribute.
This is simply if if a title, if a property transfer is titled and the new owner wants to do that, there's a process.
But they're.
I don't think that's a.
He's saying it's not, I, I, I'm, I'm trying.
But they're saying, he's saying it's not, I, I, I'm trying to, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but he's saying it's not important, that's not true, if in the ordinance that they're transferable, that means it's illegal use. They're using words to make it sound like this big scary thing, and, and I, this is a, it's a business. There is much a business as any of the wineries in town.
Yeah, I, yeah, fine, I just disagree that they're trying to like say something that's.
Okay, I'm sorry that I said that, but I'm just really frustrated, I keep hearing about enforcement, 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 instead of let's make this work.
Let's just continue with how we would like to propose the wording to the ordinance versus debating the merits of it.
Okay, can I continue with my comments?
So let's, let's finish that one, though, so we're all at least on the same book, right? So do we want to make it transferable administrative use permit versus non-transferable use permit? And if transferable, any other stipulations?
I'm in favor of transferable.
Mel, what would you?
I can go on with that.
Okay, all right. I would be fine with that as well, and I, my concern is the new owner being, ensuring that they understand of the enforcement regulation, and I guess that's on the onus of the owner, like any business. All right. Yeah, oh, Jason, Jason, any comment, any additional comment?
I would say that tonight, I'm, I'm here as a member of the public, because I, I really can't commit to actually being there. And so I'm, I'm just listening.
Oh, okay, thank you, appreciate it, and then Stephanie, I think you had additional comments.
I did, thank you. You clarified the 22 units, that's not actually going to be in the ordinance, 22, because it's a fluctuating number, right? We just put that in parentheses so we knew. But I seem to remember, and I could have remembered this wrong, that last time Bill and Mike said they didn't want to exclude Zimpandale Ridge, even though the HOA doesn't allow it, that it changed sometime. So they, they do want to take it into account, 55% of every housing stock in, in the city, right?
Correct, yeah, so it would be as, keep it as written.
Keep it as written, rather than, it would not count them, but I think they wanted it to be counted.
No, what I was saying is that we didn't, we didn't look kind of forward enough in the, like, future development, like, let's say we get to 1,000 units and 500 of those are restricted by their HOA. Does that, you know, that number still grows, but the number of actual houses that can do it doesn't grow.
Good point, so do you want to say that there should be a maximum number, 5% up to a maximum amount? Do you think that would be better?
I think that 5% is probably a good starting point, I think that you are going, I don't know, I don't know that, are people, are people buying brand-new houses to only rent out as Airbnbs or VRB, or short-term vacation rentals?
Who cares that that's what they're doing? So, and so, right, we wouldn't want 50% of the housing stock to be short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Of the available, so I, I see why you were saying not counting that, but.
You could say something like 5% for a maximum of 50 units at any, whichever is less.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah, but somebody had made a comment, and, and I want to say then, it must have been two meetings ago, about having limits in neighborhoods, so like Hoxview didn't have the grunt of all the short-term rentals, you know, or Main Street didn't have the front of it. I don't know how you would manage that, actually, to make sure it's even. But, but I, I do know it was a comment I wanted to recognize it, so.
Yeah.
Under the, the.
So, so I just, so we, clear the record, it's just going to, we're just going to leave it at 5%.
Correct, 5%.
As a recommendation.
And probably, would that mean, just take out the, the reference to 22 units, approximately 450 properties? Because that fluctuates, yeah.
For our, for.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that wouldn't be in ordinance, right?
Okay, thank you.
Under owner occupancy, so SB 9 and SB 10 just passed. So how does that change your thinking, Aaron, on, on short-term rentals? Because a normal residential unit can go up to four units now, the city can't prevent someone from putting up to four units on their property in certain things, and so you could theoretically have four short-term rentals on a piece of property if one was owner-occupied. Should there be a limit to how many you can have on a piece of property? With the change in law, or does it matter? I don't know. Again, in terms of that, I'm just thinking of neighborhood impacts.
Yeah. So if somebody purchased a, I don't know if we have, I don't think we have too many in the city multi-unit complexes, and they lived in one, and there was 10 other units, they could have not 10 other short-term rentals, essentially.
Yeah, basically, that's what I'm saying. Or if somebody wanted to turn an apartment building into short-term rentals, did they do that?
Which they have done in other cities, I've seen that, yeah.
Based, but based on these recommendations, they would have to live in one of them, and then they could.
Yes.
So, so if, if our goal is to have a balance between a healthy economy and affordable housing, do we want to address that?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
The maximum of short-term rentals on.
I do think that's fair, so like a.
Do you have, do you have two on any parcel?
Like you could say like a, with a.
There can only be.
Maximum two.
Yeah, it says, you can have, if more than one unit is on the same parcel, the owner was occupied one of the units, you could just say no more than two units on a parcel could be short-term rental.
I think, I think that's a good, I do.
I, I don't actually, I just.
I think that's a great.
Again, I'm just thinking of the neighborhood effects, and I don't know how many lots in town would be able to support additional units, but I know mine is big enough and situated that it could have additional units on it, so I'm assuming other people probably have the same situation.
Could you say that one more time, because I like that.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it, but maybe if it just said, there are no more than two short-term rentals maybe on the same parcel.
Max them two short-term rentals.
Yes.
On a parcel, and when there's two, one of them has to be owner-occupied, but, yeah.
So what, they have two on one parcel and they don't live in either.
And she just said they don't.
We just get one tax.
We get it twice.
Okay.
We have two, we have two water bills.
Yeah.
But two water bills might not mean two parcels.
I'm pretty sure it's two parcels, I need to double check for them specifically.
I think it is two parcels, we have two, I think it was just combined a long time ago.
If, if you're not sure, just.
I will ask, yeah, thank you.
And this might be a Pandora's box, but with what you're talking about. So, and I, I get the one balance to help the economy with vacation rentals, and I know that, that we, we bring a lot, vacation rentals bring a lot, and their quality to town, and I understand that, when their quality. What I'm seeing going in and what I'm hearing people, though, I know that, that up in Fiddletown, you can rent a platform outside. I know that, that.
You mean like lamp, lamping or?
It is a, it is a, it's a deck, and you rent a deck and you have bought privileges, Google Airbnb going.
Okay, I see a paragraph coming in. That's why we weren't ready for the ordinance.
Wow, that's a good point, that's a really good point.
When we're tired and you think of it, and people, and we want quality, I mean, and, and, I honestly, I mean, I, I, I like the cap, because it is, I mean, there is a balance of what, what has to be done. I want to be a responsible citizen, but if, but I could put 17 trailers on my property and decide to live in one and have, you know, obviously I can't, but, but, you know, I mean, I could, I could rent out my deck. I could rent out mine, so do you want it to be a structure? Do, do you want it to be, because there are, if you do Airbnb's in the area, Sleep Under the Stars, we have a tent, we have a yours. We have, there is a deck in Fiddletown, but you rent the deck and you use their bathroom up until 10 o'clock at night, now, I don't know what you do. But, so I, it's, so it's not just.
Right, but the county doesn't have any regulation on short-term rentals, do they?
So, oh, they do, okay.
Uh, what? So just, I just grabbed the first ordinance out of my stack of ordinances that I was researching, and this one is Sonora, and it has a definition section, and so we could put something like that. So they have short-term rental meets a single-family dwelling, multi-billing, dwelling, studio, condo, townhouse, duplex, guest house, bedroom with an existing residence or junior accessory dwelling unit rented for the purpose of continuous overnight lodging for a period of not less than one night and not more than 30 days. So something like that would define what we are regulating in our code.
So we have a definition, a hotel, that sounds remarkably similar than a hotel section, so maybe it needs to be changed from hotel to a different word.
Yeah, like short-term, like, instead of hotel, yeah, I do like the definition like that, yeah, that's a good definition. Because then it would prevent the deck or the tent, or, yeah, because there's a number of ways people rent their property nowadays.
So it could just, it could be just adding a definition in here, into our definition section, our glossary, what it's called, it's at the end of our, end of our, end of the code.
Do you see, do you see hotel?
We have bed and breakfast, we have boarding home, we have, let's see. Hotel, a building where lodging with or without meals is provided to the general public for compensation typically on a nightly basis, and where no provision is made for cooking in any individual guest room or suite, and where maximum continuous length of stay is no longer than 28 days established for transit occupancy tax.
So that would be, that one applied also to attorney, because the kitchen.
No, so I think we would just add another definition in here, similar to the one I just read, something like that, and so then, when we go, that would be in the glossary section, and then when you go back to the code, there's only ordinance section on short-term vacation rentals, we have a definition of what that word means, what that phrase.
I like that, yeah, that's good. Making a writing at that.
Maximum of two short-term vacation rentals per parcel, and if there are two, one needs to be owner-occupied.
I think that's fair.
Yeah. That's good.
Um, under length of stay slash turnover, it says none, but I think it should say no minimum, because we were, you were talking about maybe making a two-day minimum or two-night minimum, and we said we didn't want a minimum, but when it says there's no length of stay turnover, short-term by definition have to be less than 30 days, right?
The city attorney asked, said that to me, and he said, make sure you know that everyone knows you're talking about the maximum has to be under that, in that, yes, and so that would be in the definition too, of what a short-term vacation was. And so that won't be, the length of stay will be in code.
Okay.
Okay.
Under parking, I heard you say that they're going to have to submit a parking plan for both onsite and off-site parking, and I think when we talked about this last time, you just said you're doing an inspection before you issue the permit, when you're out there, you, you can count how many spaces, they have two in front, one on the side, and then you write that into the use permit, rather than, than having to draw.
So are, in the previous discussion of additional regulations, we have a site plan identifying off-street parking, traction closures, pools and spas, so my suggestion was to add off and on-street parking, and then also if that map was provided in the information for the rental, the, the guests, then they would know that there are spots.
So it's there for guest identification.
Guests, yeah, so where they should be parking and shouldn't be parking to help mitigate any parking issues for the nurse.
Okay. Under information for guests, I, I just really have a, I know that most of the places do it, but I have a problem with saying that they have to give out visitor's information, because then who's going to enforce that? And what information is allowed to be given, what if you guys decide you don't like, that they're giving out information for Cedar Creek instead of Plymouth or whatever? You know, I just, I don't know why we're requiring people to give out visitor information as a condition to get in an Airbnb, so.
Yeah, I think we just were talking about, just for promoting local business.
Yeah, and it's fine, and most of them will, but I, just having it as a condition of the permit, it, it's just one little thing that,
one little thing that just seems like a little bit.
I mean, I think the purpose was to promote business.
It was to promote.
Yeah.
But you're making an enforcement issue, is what I was saying. It's great that it's an enforcement, but to say, okay, we're going to cite you because you don't have visitor information on there. Okay, the next thing is on the last page, staff is proposing any STVRs currently operating in good standing because of T and business licenses, up to date and unrequired, TOT payments will be allowed 90-day amnesty period. I, I don't think that we should use the word amnesty, they're not regulated right now, they're not out of compliance, and it's implying that they're out of compliance, we don't have codes, so you could say they'll have 90 days to come into, you know, compliance with the new codes, but amnesty implies that they were out of compliance, you know? And they're not out of compliance because we don't have a code.
I'm really sorry, they're still governed by the transient occupancy tax code.
Yeah, right, but.
So that's why.
But this isn't about TOT, this is about getting a use permit.
Yes, so the way that, the way that's worded, it just might need to be more clear. But they're, they're still required now with business license, because they're running a business, and they're still required a transient occupancy tax. So they're still, just, just that way that they're regulated.
They have to do that already, but we're talking about they have 90 days to get a use permit.
Yeah, so it's, it's saying that they have 90 days for those people that are already following the rules, there are rules.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe removing the word amnesty, I think that's fair, yeah, because it's a.
Grace period, or just?
Yeah, maybe just a 90-day period.
Grace period, or.
Yeah, grace period.
It could be 90 days from the date the ordinance is effective, rather than adopted, because it's 30-day requirement. It takes effect, say it takes, the, the city council drafts it November 1st, it can't take effect till December 3rd. First.
So 90 days from when it's effective, rather than adopted?
Yeah, that, that.
Because it's going to take you guys a while to process them all anyway.
That was my intent, was that it was 90 days from when the code goes into a.
I think effective, yeah.
And then, and then it still gives people extra grace period while we go through that process, and that they have that 30 days where, you know, the code is just waiting to be adopted.
But the adopted is when they approve it, and then the effective day is 30 days down the line, so.
So change amnesty to grace period, and then change adopted to effective.
And then I, I just want to reiterate that I do not want to make recommendations on enforcement to the city council, I, I just want to give them some regulations that promote the ability for short-term rentals to be managed well in the, in the city, promote business, balanced housing, but I, I don't want to be making recommendations on how to enforce it, they have their code already, so.
Yeah, in the conditional use permit process, isn't that where they're referred to regulation? Like, say I apply, I submit my permit, I get approved. By, by going through that process, I'm saying, yes, I, I understand the, the process and the rules I have to live by, and the enforcement mechanism if I don't meet those rules. Like, we, we wouldn't have to add that in here.
No, I, I was under the impression that the commission wanted information about how they would be enforced, and how we would get everyone up to date on their permits, that was the impression I got from the commission, so if I.
We did, I think we did mention that last, just how, how it would be enforced, so it's good to have it here to know that. And to Mel's point, we would want any persons applying for the permit to receive the enforcement, so they know what they're getting into.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I was. That's what I was trying to relay.
Yeah.
Hit the button too high, it would come on.
All right, no, it's good, comments, any, any additional, any additional comments? All right, so.
Okay, just, I don't know if this will be the desire of the commissioner or not, and I would need to run this by the city attorney too. If it is the commission's desire, would you rather me just draft this for public hearing for the city council? If we can do that legally? I mean, so we may, I, I feel we need a substantial amount of changes tonight, and so I think it was good it came back in this kind of more discussion format.
If it's legal for us to do that, we've had three meetings now on short-term rentals, so there's been lots of opportunities. But if they have to have a public hearing at city council anyway, then it seems like we should have done ours first, since we missed that opportunity. If it's legal to do that, I would just take it to the, to save time to the city council. They're probably going to have differences of opinion with us anyway on some of this stuff.
Yeah, and so, and that. Yeah, and so, and that's one of the things, do we spend. Maybe me, me spend lots of staff time getting it into ordinance form, which is you, you saw the ordinance that's attached here. It's, it's, it's a pretty tedious process, um. I would bring it back, yeah, you know, they're, if we're gonna bring it to them and they're gonna be like, no, 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 you guys are totally off track. Then we've all wasted a lot of time, but so maybe it is the opportunity to just bring it to them. And get their first opinion on it and. If we can, so.
I think so, and that wouldn't be so cumbersome and so overbearing, all the stuff we've read it out.
Yeah.
I think as we've learned through this process, we could probably talk about this every year and make changes every time at some point, we just need to be like, okay, we're done.
Yeah, I think we're in a pretty good spot with what we've done, so let me go through what I have.
Yeah.
So the permit type section, it would be transferable administrative use permit. Uh, the second side note, add the definition of short term vacation rental as a reference in the ordinance. Similar to the one you mentioned from the city of Sonora. Uh, renewal fees stay the same, permit cap five percent of residential units excluding any reference to. Amount of units or number of units in the city. Under owner occupancy. I didn't get the specific verbiage, so could somebody say what we decided on that?
That I have for my notes, maximum of two short term vacation rentals per parcel, one must be owner occupied.
Mm-hmm, yeah. The, the.
I'm, I'm really sorry to jump in, I think you may wanna clarify that wording, because it can mean two different things. So if there's two, if there's, if they have two rentals, they have to stay in one, or can they have two rentals? Cause that wording might get to say that they can only have one, that they rent out at a time.
They can.
So if they have two.
I think the intent was that they can have a maximum of two short term rentals on a piece of property.
Yeah.
If they have more than one, it, they have to have one owner occupied.
So to have two, they would have to have three units on the property.
Correct, yeah, so we would leave the current verbiage and add what Erin was stating, right?
No. No, they wouldn't have to have three, so if they have two units on the property and the owner is living in one.
Then they would only be able to have one.
They would only have, yeah.
No, because you can do a short term rental if you're alone, which that's the whole thing about owner occupied, you're renting out a bedroom.
Oh. In a, in a room, that's a fair point.
Oh, okay, so it's, it's more than one unit, it's one, the maximum would be one unit plus one if it's a bedroom or something like that.
Yeah, owner occupied, yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
Let's say you have a three, one person, I have a house and I have a guest house on my property, I live in a four bedroom house. I rent out, can I rent out my three bedrooms? Plus my guest house, because it's that then for short term vacation rentals, because I rent out each one of those rooms in.
No, the, no, the short term rental is your house that you're renting three bedrooms at, that's one. And then the guest house is the second one, because we're defining short term rental with structure according to definition.
Yeah, we're just saying that the owner, if there's more than one unit, the owner has to live in one of these.
Has to live in one, I thought we meant, by owner occupied, we meant owner occupied short term rental.
So based on the definition I read from this other code, bedroom within an existing rental unit.
Yeah, so that's all we're doing, all we're doing here is saying that, um, if there's more than one. Unit on a parcel, the owner has to occupy one of the units.
Okay.
Plus. Your state, the additional statement, which is what you read.
But it's not unit, a bedroom isn't a unit, right? The house is.
Uh.
Right?
You, yeah, I'm thinking of unit as in building.
Yeah, she's saying that unit is each individual bedroom on.
Uh, no, I think, yeah, a unit would be like a structure, yeah.
I'm thinking. The house, right.
Yeah, like a permitted unit, yeah.
Right.
That's, that's a, that's an issue with your definitions, is what I'm saying, because your definitions is that the unit is actually defined by the owner. As to what they, as to what they listed as, is.
I, I don't think so, because it says if more than one unit is on the same parcel, so unit being a structure, right?
He's saying that in the definitions, they're calling a unit a bedroom, and I'm, we're saying we don't want that to be that way.
So, so I'm, I'm suggesting that if that's a unit, I suggest look at that definition.
Okay, so we want the definition to be that the unit is the, the structure of the bedroom.
Oh, cause.
So let me read this to you again. Short term rental means a single family dwelling, multifamily dwelling unit, studio, condominium, townhouse, duplex, guest house. Bedroom within an existing rent residential unit, no.
In that case, the unit is the residential structure, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you don't need the bedroom because it's a unit, right, so a single family dwelling, yeah.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So this actually covers it, this wording covers it, yeah.
Yeah. That makes me. I, I feel like there might be issues because short term vacation rentals can be a single unit in it.
But we're defining unit in that definition as the structure, not the bedroom.
So unit, so it, it's no, it's single family residential, okay, you have a house. You might have a condo, you might have a townhome, but they're each an individual unit, you don't define unit by the number of bedrooms.
Yes, correct.
So I guess my thought is that I have my three bedrooms that I rent out, I rent them out to three different people. They each bring their two, two cars for each one of those one bedroom unit, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to.
Correct, but it can't exceed, you, you have to limit your parking, so that's the parking.
Remember vehicles cannot exceed onsite parking plus legal street parking, so that's a natural limiter.
Exactly, so the two together are.
Yeah.
Are constraining their, the, uh, the rental, yeah. Cause you, the definition of unit that you read is the structural unit, not the unit as in a bedroom or a, uh, rental.
And at some point, if you're renting three different bedrooms to three different people, are you really renting a bed and breakfast, not a short term rental?
Yeah.
I mean, you could say that the short term rental. Okay, can you guys weigh in, do you ever rent different bedrooms to different groups, not different, not, you don't, right?
No, no, but Airbnb was set up for people, originally, it was set up for people who have an extra room in their house.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and, and I wish that it wasn't, I mean, we made the mistake one time of renting a room in a house, because we thought it was the whole house, it was a nightmare. Um, so, so under Airbnb, I can. Rent out separately in my house and, I, and in, but, so rest is one building, but it's. Eight units or however many, I don't know how many, I think it's eight, so, so I think that. Um, it, I, I don't know if anybody in town would never do it, um, actually, I do know someone, they, they're over on Chicken Flat, they don't rent that often. But they rent out part of their home, and so, so.
I, I, when I stayed in, in short term rentals, I've been in somebody's home.
Yeah.
Right.
So, um. It, but you could say that we don't want more than one group in, in the home at some point.
Can we just say str- if more than one structural, structure, structural unit is on the property, the owner must occupy one of the structural units?
Yes.
Cause, but, but it, uh, in your definition of the short term vacation rental, the unit is defined as the structure. Just in how you read it.
I think it's fine.
I, I, yeah.
And if it, if it becomes an issue, you come back and ask the council to amend the order.
Yeah, I think with the definition, actually, the, the unit is defined, so we're using the same definition in the owner occupancy section as the unit.
So every, everything from this definition except the bedroom within an existing residential unit.
It, but, just saying, just what you said there is exactly what we're talking about, a bedroom within the existing residential unit. So the unit is defined as the residential structure.
The whole structure, so you don't need that law.
Correct, exactly.
Bedrooms, no. I, I, I.
I think that's a great definition, and all we're saying is the, the term unit here is used appropriately.
Right.
Which it, it would be. If, if we're referencing that as the definition.
So I'm sorry, okay, what do I take out of this definition? Nothing?
No, the law, right.
Leave that to say.
Right, the, the phrase it says one bedroom.
Oh, they can.
One bedroom within.
Bedroom.
You could rent a bedroom.
No, you can, but it's not considered a short term, she's saying this is what a short term rental is. Is a residential structure or a bedroom within a residential structure, but it's not a bedroom within a residential structure.
Correct. It is, yeah, and I think it would be though.
It's that it doesn't, that one bedroom doesn't count as one short term vacation rental, the house counts as a short term vacation rental and it has.
Correct, the unit.
Right.
Yes.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, exactly, we're on the same page, yeah.
Yes.
So that stays the same, because the residential unit is referred to as unit and there's bedrooms within a unit.
Right.
And then this, this is just saying, if there is more than one unit, unit is defined by that statement. Then on the same parcel, the owner must occupy one of the units. I E, the residential structure is in the definition.
And when you're doing.
Can I suggest you say the owner has to reside on a parcel or something like that, because they wanna have, because then that is, they have to live. Say, again, say they have three, I was just trying to make my confusion, sorry for that, I, you're all on the same page.
Yeah, but then we added.
We are saying if there's two units on the property, the owner has to live in one of them.
And, and then we added the additional stipulation, which was the, um. The new, the new portion of that same section, which was what we were, what I asked you to first read. So, uh, what was that statement again?
Maximum of two short term vacation rentals per parcel.
Correct.
One must be owner occupied, but I get, I, I, I'd see where Michael, so you can't, you're not having two short term vacation rentals on the property if one of them is owner occupied.
No.
No, you can't, you.
Yeah, you can't have three units.
No, there's two units, I could rent a bedroom and I could rent the other unit.
Okay, so you can't have two. Standalone only tenant occupied units on the property.
Correct. Correct.
Right, only have a standalone and then a bedroom.
Correct.
Okay, I got it now, but I, Michael, I see where you thought that might be confusing.
Wrong, everyone's on the same page.
We're all on the same page, we're just not articulating.
It's, it's hard to, it's hard to describe that.
I, I think it's make sure, make sure the lawyer knows what you wanna say. He wants to put the wording.
The way William was talking about.
Well, fortunately, we're all recorded, so.
That's right, yeah.
Listen to it and figure.
The way William was talking about, but. Make more sense if it, if there's more than one unit on the same parcel, the owner must occupy one of the structures?
Must live in one of the structures.
And that would be, yeah, there you go.
Must live in one structure.
Yeah, yeah.
It, you know, the, the other option, Erin, is to redefine your hotel. Or definition, so that a hotel is any residential structure offering more than three bedrooms for rent. And then it's not a short term rental if they have more than three bedrooms, it's a. Hotel or bed and breakfast or something.
So the city manager and the city attorney and I have gone through that to see what, what, if anything, can we just change the definition in the code, does that make this easier? And that between hotels and Airbnb, uh, not Airbnb, bed and breakfast. Uh. It wasn't, it, it, it kind of made it more confusing, it made more sense to just add its own section, so.
No, I meant in addition to its own section, you could also say anything that where somebody's renting three standalone. If they're renting four bedrooms in a house, it's not a short term rental. If they're renting them separately, it becomes a hotel, is what I'm saying, or a bed and breakfast. It's a different use permit process.
So we, and we have a definition of bed and breakfast, which is five. A bed and breakfast and with more, uh. Five bedrooms.
Also, it's already there, so then the short term rental is limited to four bedrooms.
Yeah.
And if you have two on the property, the owner has to be in one, they only have three bedroom strength.
Right there, and they have to be in one of the structures, yeah.
There you go.
Right there, no deal, like that.
Okay, Stephen, I was, but they're laughing at us.
Well, when you did the eighty five page ordinance down here, uh. My question is, common sense tells me you're not gonna be able to get anybody to enforce it because you can't enforce ordinances you have here now.
Yeah.
I, I wanna respond to that, and, and you're correct that there is, um. Um, it's frustrating when someone is blatantly violating laws, um, as opposed to someone that's just doesn't know what the laws are, or. Maybe they can't afford to do what needs to be done to come into compliance, um. And we do have a new code enforcement officer in town, hopefully they have that common sense and balance to try to, to bring that to it. But if the code enforcement officer is planning on going in, inspecting bedrooms and making sure that there's. Um, information being handed out and that there's, you know. Curtains on the window or whatever the heck is gonna be in the use permit, then it, it gets a little intrusive and non-enforceable, you're right. So that, that's why I'm hoping that we come up with something that makes sense, it's easy for the businesses to do, but that, you know, the city feels that they're, you know. Regulating it properly.
All right, so, I think, I think we're good on that section now, so if more than one unit is on the same parcel, the owner must occupy one of the structures.
It's a trial and error. Yeah.
And then we would additionally add. The comment that I keep asking you to read. And then.
Maximum of two short term vacation rentals per parcel.
Uh-huh.
Owner must occupy one of the structures.
Why don't you put one of the short term rentals and then it's clear.
That's, that's fine, that works too.
One of the short term rentals.
Yep, perfect.
If there's more than one. Yeah.
It must occupy one of the, yeah.
Yeah, because you guys were confused about owner occupied.
Yeah, we're just, I think that states that they, they need to live there, right, so I think that covers the policy.
Must not, that you can say the second rental must be a room. In the structure occupied by the owner or something, I, I think just a little bit more, because occupied, you can have two, but you have to occupy one, if it's not clear unless you have something else that's.
But we don't, we don't care if they live in the room or the living room or the dining room, it doesn't matter to us, because we're not gonna, we're not enforcing that piece. A person could say I'm sleeping in the kitchen today, we, we don't, we, we.
Are you concerned about how you're gonna assess this T O T?
No, I'm, I'm concerned because I wanna make sure it's clear, especially I was the council, that you want to allow two rentals.
And I think we've stated that, yeah, so I think we're good with the, with the wording that you stated there, so could you just read that one more time, then we'll move on to the next section.
Maximum of two short term vacation rentals per parcel.
Correct.
Owner must occupy one structure, I hesitate, putting short term vacation rental in there because. Saying an owner must occupy a short term vacation rental kind of sounds.
I think a structure is fine, yeah.
That's fine. We know what it means.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's.
We can volunteer to go out on the, uh, the initial orientation.
Yeah, I think a reasonable.
Makes it a little shorter.
Exactly.
A little more self-explanatory.
Right, and it's a reasonable person's standard to say, a reasonable per- person's gonna know. The owner needs to live there if there's more than two, two structures. Um, and then the last section was the staff, uh, is proposing, et cetera. Will be allowing ninety day grace period from the date the ordinance is effective. And then retain the rest of the verbiage. And that was.
That was it, did a great job of summarizing, thank you.
Everybody good comments today, I think we get there, all right, so, um. Would we be making a recommendation that the city? Planner take this away, develop the ordinance and present that to city council for a public hearing?
So I believe if we can legally do that, it sounds like that's what the commission wants to do, and I am going to double check with the city attorney that we can legally do that, we're not gonna miss any important things in the code. Because I do think we've, we've worked enough and gotten to a good point that to save time, it makes the most sense, so if that.
I can make a motion, anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, forward our recommendations, um, that, let me restart. I'll make a motion that our recommendations be incorporated into an ordinance, a draft ordinance by the planning director. Presented to the planning commission, um, during the public hearing. Um, if that is not allowed per ordinance, then, um, it would come back to us at the November meeting as a public hearing.
I think.
Right?
You said planning commission, did you mean city council?
I, I probably said it wrong, city council, so.
Okay, so recommendation.
Recommendation that the. Planning director draft the ordinance with our recommendations for presentation to the council during public hearing. If it's necessary that it come back to planning commission first, then the, the plan, the public hearing will be scheduled in November. For that ordinance with our recommendations.
Wow, that was a good, that was good.
So that is.
I'll read this back to you real quick, let me write it down.
Yeah.
Does that bypass in the city council then?
Then, that's saying it's gonna, the recommendation is that if the ordinance draft goes directly to the city council.
But, yeah, but if they can't do it, then it comes back to us.
Uh, let me just read this real quick, actually. Okay, so the recommendation is that the planning director draft an ordinance to be brought to the city council if, if legally that can be done. At a public hearing for review, and if legally it cannot go straight to the city council as a draft ordinance. It, it will come back here as a draft ordinance, public hearing at our next meeting, our November meeting, yeah.
Except that I would say, um, that you're gonna draft an ordinance with our recommendations, because that wasn't in that thing, so.
Yeah, okay, do I have a. Yeah, okay, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll say it, I think you understand.
Can I have a roll call vote?
All right, commissioner Poser?
Was that me? I couldn't hear, I, I would make a noise.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioner Moran. Yes. Commissioner Rouse is absent, Vice Chair Sullivan is absent, Chair Clapham.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Free, yes, folks, two absent.
All right, well, thank you, great, uh, great discussion and dialogue, I think we got to a good point here, good place. Um, that thanks to the, our public participants here, the penalties for. Uh, joining us and providing some valuable insight, we appreciate that. All right, let's go to, uh, there's no new business, uh, so let's go to report outs. I personally don't have any report outs, do either of the other commissioners have a, a report out they'd like to give?
Um, I had a question for the planning director.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Wow, you gave up a game for us?
Yeah. Gave up my night for you.
Um, Erin, uh, at the last meeting with you, it said that you could provide the traffic study for us that Carol Emerson had been requesting. And I stopped by the office to get a copy of it, and they said that you're still working on it, so I didn't know if they were thinking something different than what. You had offered. So what I did earlier today, this afternoon, is I sent an email to all the commissioners with a little bit of backstory or history of. What led to this traffic study and with the attached traffic study.
Okay, definitely, okay, thank you.
So it has, I think it goes back to two thousand and fifteen, the, um. The dates actually were taken, including has the, the draft study. Thank you for doing that, you're welcome.
Thanks for sending that out, uh, do we have any report outs, so no, any additional report outs you'd like to make? Any additional comments or reports you'd like to make?
No, I think that covers it for me, and I, thank you.
All right, planning director?
Yes, I do, so, um, this is hot off the press, I don't think the city council knows about this, but we had our countywide housing element kickoff meeting today. So that is really exciting, um, exciting for planners, I don't know, it's exciting for everybody. But, so the county is, uh, the county applied for a grant. The REAP grant, and so they are the ones that are funding the housing element, and we are working together to, to do another, um. Countywide housing element, which we did the previous housing cycle. So that, uh, happened today, also, the R F P for the E I R for the Greenwich project is going out tomorrow. So that I have a, a, a pretty long list of consultants, local, or kind of California environmental consultants. And that have Northern California, Northern California offices, uh, that I'm sending it to, it will also be placed on our website. It will be placed through, uh. California Association of Environmental Professionals, they have a, a place, a posting spot on there where R F Ps can be posted. So they will be posted on there, so that is another exciting thing, um. And thirdly, oh, planning commission emails, and we set up, I believe four of you are on the planning commission email, and. Ms. Moran, you have, you use your own email. No, not, no emails of importance to report, there's, uh, spam, we got lots and lots of spam emails. So, um, and it was mostly about TV mounting, mounting TVs, looking for someone to do that, I'm not sure what list we got on, but. I did not forward you the twenty of those that are received, uh, but I've been keeping an eye on it, and. If something of importance does come through, I will of course forward it to everyone.
Thank you for.
I'll probably come to regret. So can you explain, because I'm really confused about the, the Greenwich Ranch project? If it is ever coming to planning commission, if it's just going to city council?
Oh, it, yes, it will definitely come to planning commission, that will be, um, its first stop. Once we, once we get the application package together, and the E I R is part of the application package, I know that's. Everyone's excited, I want to see maps, what are they gonna build, this and that, but to be able to make a, a truly informed decision, you need to. Have an environmental impact report to be able to evaluate the potential impacts and how that could affect your decision, so. It will come to your planning commission, both the E I R and the project, and then we'll go to city council, because they are the final moving body. Because of the, um, applications they've applied for, which are general plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, use permits, um. Development agreement, and then E I R is, uh, city council's the final say on that too.
And you were gonna have a second scoping session for the public, is that happening?
Yes, it is happening, initially, we were thinking it was going to be, uh. Like in the next month or so, but we initially said that when we started. The initial study going to the city council, and that took about three months to get through. Because of things outside of kind of our control, uh. And that would put it at, right at the holiday time, and I felt that it was best in the council agree. That we wait to get the consultant on board, and then do it right at the beginning, you know, in the beginning of the year, so that the consultant is here hearing those comments firsthand. Instead of. Relaying the comments, and also is an opportunity to kind of introduce the consultant to the community as the face of the environmental portion of the project. So, look out for that, uh, meeting, probably the beginning of the year.
And then what happens if your public comment indicates that, that something was not addressed in the E I R scope? Can the city council amend the scope of the E I R to? Include, to address those comments?
Yeah, and that's one of the purposes of a scoping meeting is to get comments from those that live in the community or potentially know of. Impacts, because how, how do you know, you know, when you're just trying to take a snapshot of a project to make a project description, you don't know. And so, um, that, that information that comes in as scoping meeting is really invaluable, and then they can, they take that information and kind of can help direct in. Directions to go, what to study, what, what is of higher importance, or, um, they might not have known about without this input.
So the E I R, R F P is not locked in to what was in the. The, the R F P for the E I R?
So we have a project description in there, because that's what we know to, of the project to be at this time with the information we have. So once they start the investigation, the, the studies, reviews and things like that, then that.
So it's not a focused E I R?
Isn't, yeah. Isn't the A R, like, it's already a predetermined, uh. Sequence of items they look at, and what I think the scoping meeting would do is say, the public's more concerned about the oak tree, so. Pay special attention, because they would already look at like environmental impact, but our concern maybe is oak trees, or it's, uh. An owl, or it's, uh, the strain or something.
Right, I just wanted, I didn't know if they had focused the E I R, so they're only looking at certain things.
No, we're looking at all, everything.
Sixteen elements or whatever.
Yeah, the, oh, yeah, I think you went to that, there's six, those sixteen elements that. Regardless of the project, right, if you do any, are all sixteen elements are, are always.
Yeah, and a lot of them, not, I shouldn't say a lot of them, on some projects. There, there is definitely no impact, you know, but in this project, almost all of the sixteen topics. Were, there was, there was potential for impact, so they were all be studied, we're not saying, oh, there's definitely not gonna be a water quality issue. Obviously, everybody's being studied.
I, I had a question on the, the housing element grant, countywide, so does that include the city of Plymouth itself, and then like the city of Ione and Jackson and?
Yeah, so it's us, Amador City, Sutter Creek, Jackson, Ione, and the county.
Oh, wow. Any additional comments from commissioners or city staff?
No.
I am clear.
All right.
I'm clear.
Thank you, thank you. I think that covers it, I'll move, or I'll adjourn the meeting for, uh, today at eight ten P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.